All right, come on in everybody. Welcome back to the Holler, TN Holler is where you can find us at the TN Holler on Twitter and Facebook and Instagram and YouTube and Threads and TikTok, what'd I miss? That's pretty much it. Appreciate you guys supporting us. As always, you can catch all the hollers hollering all across the state. That's the thanks to your support. We really do appreciate it. Chip in a few bucks a month. It goes a long way. Want to send a shout out to Elisa Parker. If you're buying or selling in middle Tennessee, do it through her. If you need some jewelry, Eric, A.J. Martin is who you should use. And if you ever need a lawyer for any particular reason, Abby Rubenfeld is very supportive of us. So we recommend everybody call Abby. All right. Today we are talking about something that we've been talking about for quite a while now, and we'll continue to talk about all the way through the coming session. In January, February, March and April, and however long this lasts, because this is the priority. For Governor Lee, which means it will be the priority for a lot of people. In this coming session, it is the school voucher, the private school vouchers, the private school voucher scam, whatever you want to call it. And one thing that has been happening quite a bit lately, actually, the most since we started the Holler that we've seen. Is local voices have already been speaking up against this idea of private school vouchers, taking public funds. And steering them to private schools. We've seen superintendents across the state in places like Greenville and Collierville. And all kinds of conservative areas, not just Memphis and Nashville, although there too. And one of the local voices here in Williamson County where I live that I tend to listen to, even though we don't agree on everything. But I do appreciate when he speaks up and that's Eric Welch, a Republican Williamson County School Board member who has thoughts about the vouchers. Eric, how are you today?
I'm good, Justin. Good to be here. Appreciate you having me.
So again, I just, I always like to point out that you're Republican, even though you know, school boards generally are nonpartisan, but they've lately become partisan by law. Yeah. But I do think it's important that people know that, you know, I'm not just here talking to somebody who agrees with me about every issue. You know, you and I probably wouldn't agree about many issues, but when it comes to protecting public schools, I feel like we have common ground and. From where I'm sitting and you know, you can tell me how you feel about it here, but from where I'm sitting, this is kind of just the latest front in the attack on public schools. By a group of people who want to privatize public schools and want to steer public dollars to private entities any way they can. And so Eric, I would just ask you, is that the way you see it? And you know, how do you see it? How do you see this voucher issue?
Yeah, good question, Justin. So I guess I see it not so much as wanting to privatize public schools, but wanting to subsidize private schools. I think is a better way to to put it in that sense. And it's like anything else, you know, any, anytime there's the opportunity to, you know, expand your private enterprise, you know, get, get good margin, make more profits or things like that. You're going to see private entities go after it and put a lot of weight behind it. I think that's what we've seen and that's what we've seen with lobbying, you know, it's certainly a good investment. And that if you can go ahead and get, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars fed into your coffers while the investment in terms of. Hiring lobbyists and making campaign donations and buying votes is, you know, from a purely dollars and cents and taking the morality out of the argument, it's a wonderful investment. And that's a lot of what we have. And unfortunately, you know, public education, we're in the business of educating kids, educating every single kid that comes to us and not in the business of. You know, giving kickbacks to legislators to vote in our interest. So we're fighting a little bit with, with one arm tied behind our back or. You know, in some cases, maybe it's two arms tied behind our back in that case. So I think you're right. I think that is what we're seeing with it. Philosophically, you know, and you said it, you know, I tend to be much more center right, much more libertarian in my thinking. So ideologically, I'm not opposed to, you know, I'm. Wherever you want to go and get your education for your child. I don't mind if you want to send him to a private school, if you want to send him to a public school, if you want to homeschool your kids. Whatever. I don't care as long as they're getting a good education. But once we bring public dollars into the equation, it's, it's not your own money that you're spending. And that's so much of what this false argument is, you know, talking about. Parents having the choice of how their dollars are spent. It's not the individual's dollars. It's, it's all of us. We all pay into the system. And we're not paying for, you know, as we said, child, we're paying for a system of schools that can educate all children. That's what public education is. We don't evaluate. On the individual, you know, we say that, you know, if you're a child, you're a resident, you have access and a right to a quality education. And that's how we look at it and don't pick and choose. So that's, that's a really long answer to a short question, but I would say ideological, that's, that's kind of more how I see it is that. What's going on here is it's profit driven, at least from the sense of a lot of the, the out of state. You know, private entities that are coming in and really trying to lobby heavier for these dollars. And it's, you know, I think there's a lot of dishonest arguments about it, about what's the motivation behind it, what's the goal, what we've been told and how to get there. You know, I'm sure there's a lot of research and focus group messaging behind it of what to say and what to avoid, but you know, it's not exactly jiving with the reality of the circumstances.
Right. And I think having been there for Governor Lee's announcement, you could feel that the people in that room were, you know, this was like the culmination of. The lobbying that they had done and you know, you could feel that people were ready to dip their hands in the coffers. And it's important, as you said, we're talking about a lot of money. You know, there's a lot of money in public education. And so if they can, you know, get the camel under the nose of the, under the tent, so to speak, and get in there. Eventually the floodgates would potentially open. Now, you know, you're, you're talking about the profit motive here, and I think it's really obvious that that's a part of this. But just playing devil's advocate for a second, you know, they would say, no, this is, this is for the good of the kids. And you know, what I say is you're leaving a lot of kids behind because it's maybe for the good of one or two kids here, even though the data doesn't necessarily show it even works for them. But you're leaving a lot of kids behind. So can you talk for a little bit about the idea that vouchers are for the good of the kids, which is what they're trying to say?
Yeah. So that, that obviously that was one of the arguments early on and you know, initially talked about, we're only going to put them in failing school districts or in failing schools. Well, first off, well, how are you defining that? And that was never very clear. It was never very well defined. In order to get the initial wave vouchers, they pulled out Knoxville, which was not a failing system by, by any stretch, but that was one of the ones originally put in there. Governor didn't have the votes. And so, you know, they put Knoxville out so they could buy Knoxville legislators to go ahead and, and vote for it. So there are some inconsistencies right off the bat. Williamson County Schools, you know, when we met in 2000 with our legislative delegation. Senator Jack Johnson was in the room and we told him, you know, about this, we're, we're opposed as a group, you know, we see this as encroaching as the very first step. And at that time, he, you know, no, no, no. And wanted us to stop talking about it. And you know, this won't affect Williamson County Schools. It doesn't. If it ever. Impacts Williamson County Schools, you know, I, I'll oppose it. I'll, I'll use my position to oppose it. Here we are four years later and he's completely flip flopped on the issue, not only, you know, now currently supports it in Williamson County Schools. It's, it's. Under a system that's lost any, you know, criteria of has to be a failing school system. Well, we're the number one school system in terms of performance in the state. You know, it, for then it was for economically disadvantaged students. Well, now they're, they're talking about taking that away. If it's really about for the advantage of the student and, you know, then why isn't there any testing on it? The voucher program, you know, when initially passed was sold to us that this is a pilot program. Well, anytime you have a pilot program, you measure, you evaluate the results and then you make adjustments based upon those evaluations. Well, where's the data on that? We've seen very little of it. We've seen very little reported. There were some articles in Tennessee and about, you know, where TCAPS were applied. The numbers in the voucher schools were actually lower than those in where they originally came from. So that would be an indication of something is wrong here and, you know, need to pull back and evaluate. But instead it's, it's the opposite. It's full speed ahead and expand it. So it's hard to say that this is really about children, the interests of children, when there's not really any evaluation update. The fact is, is, you know, the vouchers, these are coupons for, for kids who are already in private schools to be able to subsidize their education. That's what we saw in states like Arizona where they passed this already, you know, the universal program. About 75% of those vouchers went to students that were already in private schools. So it's, it's just blowing up the, the budgets. It's increasing the debts. It's not focused on kids who need this. It's, it's a subsidy. For children who are already in those systems, which I support. Again, you know, if that's where you want to send your kids, send them there. But you know, if, if I don't want to use the library, it's not like I say, well, I want a voucher to be able to go to Barnes and Nobles and buy my own books because I can't find them there. I have the right to do that, but I don't have the right to pull out of the, you know, the Williamson County Library System.
You covered a lot there. It's all on point. Absolutely. You mentioned Arizona where they're seeing their budget is crippled now because of this, they're seeing some schools. That are maybe closing where tearfully parents are testifying that vouchers and charters have had a lot to do with it. You also mentioned Jack Johnson and how he basically told you and Williamson County that he would never support vouchers in Williamson County. But there's a perfectly good explanation for why he does now, Eric. And I just want to let you weigh in a little bit further on that. You know, he says that the reason that he is now for it is because never didn't actually mean never, never meant just not then. Right? So never, never didn't mean never. And, and it seems like you responded to what he said, calling it Clintonian. How do you take it when Jack says that never didn't mean never?
Well, I think that's, I stand by what I said with that. I think it's very Clintonian. It's, it's very much, you know, never didn't mean never. It's. It's very shades of it's definite, it's what's your definition of is, is, you know, never means never, you know? And so it would be one thing if, if Jack came out and sort of said, you know what, I said that and I've had a change of heart. I've changed my mind. And here's why. At least you could, you know, say, all right, I disagree with you. I think you're wrong. Let's argue and debate upon the merits of it. But don't come and tell us that never didn't mean never, you know, he sat actually right next to him in the room. There were media present. There were several of them. Frankly, when he said it, Glenn Cassidy, who was there kind of gave him a sideways dirty look at, at the time. Because frankly, you know, we didn't really believe them. You know, we knew this was more politics at the time, but at least had the courtesy of, of not lying straight to our face.
Well, when Glenn Cassidy is giving you a dirty look because you're being shady, that's how you know you, you might be crossing the line here. I want to play for you a clip. This was at the announcement of the voucher expansion. This was. Governor Lee being asked if there was going to be accountability attached to these vouchers.
Systems in the nation for our public schools and some of the highest thresholds for proficiency creation for our public schools. Under your bill, will you require TCA testing for all students who receive these scholarships? Will these public schools who accept, excuse me, public schools that accept public money have to also receive A through F grades under our accountability system?
I, yeah. So let me just say that final details of this legislation aren't worked out. This is day one. It's November. The General Assembly will come back in January and this will be a legislative effort. I mean, we're going to work together with the legislature to find. That the final, you know, the final details of this legislation, this is a framework that we've put out today, but we'll continue to work on it. So. I don't know the detail answer for that, but we'll.
I don't know the detail answer for that. Eric, when Governor Lee says that this program of his that has been basically his. Number one priority since he got to office, that he doesn't know the detailed answer about whether or not there's going to be accountability associated with that. Do you believe it?
Well. I mean, look, we've been talking about how many years, you know, it's, it's November, then come back in January, well, 60 days. You're telling me you don't have a plan in place or details. And it would be one thing if the governor says, well, I can't guarantee anything because the legislature needs to pass it, you know, okay. But don't sit here and sort of throw your hands up in the air and say, well, I don't know. You know, you certainly knew that you were pushing for a plan that didn't have any accountability in terms of school performance. You know that you don't have a plan. Or you know that your plan isn't going to have any income requirements. You know that you're going to roll it out statewide, but then when you're asked sort of the most basic thing about, you know, accountability, are you going to test? I'm like, well, we don't know yet. It's, it's 60 days away on this plan we've been working for. Since it got in. So I mean, pardon my French, but you know, Governor, don't piss on my head and tell me it's raining. You know darn well that there's not going to be the same accountability that there are for public schools. Because you know, your friends at Hillsdale and the other institutions that want to come in and get a hold of these money don't want that. The other thing that they don't want is they don't want to have to accept every student like we do. I, you know, and kind of going back to that legislative meeting we had with our delegation in there. I remember at the time it was Representative Cassidy before. His, he was still in legislature and his indictment and arrest and all of that. One of the things he tried to sell us on about vouchers was competition. And he tried to make these analogies between, you know, Ford and Nissan and things like that. Well, competition is fabulous, you know? I have no issues at all about competition. But if you're going to take public dollars, then you need to have the accountability. You need to be measured in the same way. You need to have those results published in the same way. I mean, I'll put Williamson County Schools toe to toe against any public, private charter school in the state or the country. I was not saying, you know, necessarily the number one best, but we're pretty darn good and apples to apples. You're going to be awfully hard pressed to find anyone out there that does what we do. In terms of it. And that's why I think a lot of these groups, they don't want that. They don't want to say, well, let's look at, you know, economically disadvantaged kids, English second language. Let's look at those who have special needs and disabilities and that. Because frankly, you know, when you start talking about going back to the analogy, you know, of Ford versus Nissan, one of the whole points about capitalism is you stop. Investments that aren't profitable. Go ahead and try to, to purchase a 2024 Ford Taurus these days. You're going to be awfully hard pressed to find it. And same thing with a lot of these private schools that are salivating about taking these, you know, coupons for public dollars is they're not going to want to take students that are high cost, low margin. Those are the students that are going to be, you know, pushed back to the public school system. Because nobody else is going to, to want them. If you're. You have special needs, if you have behavioral, any behavioral issues at all. If you have, don't toe the line in terms of, you know, any doctrine that the school wants you to, to follow or your parents don't, or whatever it is. There's no oversight there from the state of what are the guidelines and requirements. Those are all decided by the school systems. And so I think, you know, when they call it school choice, maybe it's, it's in some ways, it's a very apt description because it's the school that chooses, not the individual parents.
That's right. And that's what Josh Cowan, who was just on here, who was a policy professor at Michigan State, that's exactly what he said also that. You know, the school choice is a misnomer. And so, you know, I appreciate that you're, you're willing to say that and to come on here, talk about it. You know, these vouchers are really going to take money from public schools. And one of the things that we're hearing from Governor Lee and from Supiki. Is that they're not going to hurt the budgets of public schools. Can you just take that on for a minute and tell us, you know? What are, what are they, what are they trying to, how are they trying to say that steering all this money from public schools to private schools won't hurt public school budgets? Are they just playing a shell game that down the line it will?
Well, I don't know if they're playing a shell game or anything, but I just think it's, it's ridiculous statement. It's, it's unbelievable, completely unbelievable. You look at Williamson County Schools, what we get for state funding is about $4,000 per student on, on averaged out. And that's under the new TISA plan and that what we're seeing. The vouchers, what they're talking about is $7,000. So $3,000 more per student is what they're talking about. Giving as opposed to, you know, in Williamson County Schools to potentially go. Out of county or somewhere else or homeschool as opposed to a public system. And you know, you start comparing those side by side. Williamson County Schools, we accept every single student regardless of needs and we provide for them. Regardless of creed or race, economic situation, whatever it is, you are absolutely welcomed and wanted and loved and brought in with open arms. And we take care of you and we give you the very best education that we can provide you. You as a citizen of this community, you have the ability to have a voice of who's in charge of the school district. You can vote for those of us on the Board of Education. You can't do that for a private school. You have the ability to review all of our curriculum material, school books. You have the ability to weigh in. You have the ability to look at what's in our library. You have the ability to restrict any books or texts that you don't want your child to see. None of that you have in a public system, or I'm sorry, in the private, you know, voucher system where you're going ahead and get these taxpayer subsidized coupons. But when you look at the actual funding for it, one of them is going to be again, $7,000 versus $4,000 for the one that has the transparency and, and open. And isn't operated as a for-profit. And money's fungible. So you start taking all those numbers. Again, I'm going to go back to the Arizona model where they said 75% of those vouchers went to. Students who had never been in a public school system. Well, now you're just talking about adding, you know, where Governor Lee is talking about where he wants to go with this, which is a, a universal system for all. That's tens of thousands of kids at $7,000 a pop or hundreds of thousands of kids really at seven grand a pop that you're going to start. You know, adding all these additional funds for. That's hundreds of millions of dollars. I think the number is, you know, it's created a $900 million hole in the Arizona budget. That, you know, has come from the system. And the satisfaction levels frankly with vouchers aren't all that great. In Florida where they've had it and they've had some initial rollback things, about 30% of the kids who do use the vouchers end up going back. To the public system anyways. They're not happy with it. And so then it's just a wasted investment that we have. So it's a huge drain on the resources. It's not, you know, it's, it's comparing, let's say apples and oranges, but it's, you know, comparing apples and broccoli. In terms of the dollars amount and the requirements behind it and the, the measurements and all the different things that go with it. And, and so to sort of say, what did it say? It's, it's a money saver? No. Nowhere that it's been done has been shown to be as money saver. It's a huge money loss. Nowhere that's been done has it seemed to improve the performance. Nowhere that it's done. Has it increased transparency in terms of it has allowed more public input into what goes on. It's. And Justin, again, let me go back and say, conceptually. I don't care where you educate your kid. I'm not even ideologically opposed to the concept of. If you're in a stuck in a failing school system, the, the system has shown that, you know, it, it's either unwilling or doesn't have the ability to get. Out of that, to be able to give some alternatives to that. I think that's a strong argument to make and we can start to have that debate and what that looks like and what are the guidelines and. Guardrails behind that. But that's not at all what this is. This is a pure free for all where we're going to just start throwing these education coupons out to our, our out of state donors. Who are salivating at the thought of getting this money so they can start increasing their, their profit margins.
I got a couple of things left to ask you. I appreciate the time, of course. One thing is just, you know, you're speaking out here. There's been people speaking out all across the state in all kinds of counties. I mentioned Greenville, Collierville, obviously Nashville. Are, do you know if there's a plan to pass any kind of resolution at the Williamson County School Board? Is this going to be a topic coming up soon? I know you're off in December, but do you anticipate? Some sort of action being taken by the Williamson County School Board?
Well, I, I hope so. I can't speak. There's 12 of us on the board. I can only speak for myself. I'm certainly. Supportive of something along those lines, but I don't know where my colleagues stand because again, you go back to the transparency of it, you know, we don't deliberate. In, in private about these things.
You don't have a group text?
We do not.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. And then I, my other question would be, and this is something that I got asked when I went on 99 seven. Recently and, you know, discussed some of these issues with somebody who I have very little in common with, but it was a fruitful discussion. You know, he asked me why I thought Williamson County had such good schools. And I guess I would pose that question to you. You know, Williamson County is number one. What are some of the reasons that you think Williamson County is able to have such a good school system and reputation?
Sure. That's a great question. So when you look at it, I think there's two ways that you got to look at, you know, there's academic achievement and there's academic growth. And academic achievement is basically, you know, if you think about what's your 40 time, it's, it's how fast did you run? And we run really fast. And part of that, you know, we're going to say is, is we're very blessed in that we do have an affluent. Community. We do have parents that are very supportive of the school system. That want their children to do well, that, that go home, you know, and not that every child is like that by any stretch. And you know, you, you don't know what goes on behind individual families, but you know, we, it's, it's fair to say our demographics are better than a lot of our, you know, sister counties or so forth. And so we need to own that. And that does impact some of our academic achievement. But then you start digging in and it's not, it's, our academics are great across the board. So even students with, you know, ESL or special needs in, in many cases, they're. Outperforming the state averages for those groups, but they're also outperforming in most cases, the state average of a student in general, even when you look at those subpopulations. And so I think that's a testament to the great work that, you know, our, our teachers do, the leadership we have at building level and our principals in the district office. We have a strategic plan that we put in place, you know, we do these, you know, five year plans and we rule a kind of long term about where we want to be, what is the growth? We break it down into baby steps to get there and that's how we accomplish it. The other side that I alluded to that is academic achievement and that's comparing like-minded group to like-minded groups. And that's another, we really exceed. So, you know, when people sort of say, well, you know, Williamson County Schools cheese because of its. Demographics, you know, yeah, there's some truth to that, but that's not the only reason why. And if you start looking at, you know, comparing the, the high achieving kids to high achieving kids, we're still excelling. And so going back and using that sort of analogy of, you know, the sprinter. It's hard for, I'm saying bolt to shade huge amounts of time off, off of, you know, it's a hundred meter dash, you know? But there's that incremental growth performance that we see with that. And we see, again, we see that among all groups. So we're really moving the needle. For all students because it's a public school system, we're taking all students, yeah. And we're, I would say it's just sort of a philosophy of, of a lot of rigor is another thing with us. We want to push our kids. We want to push every kid. We don't look at, you know, is, is just because of your, your background, your demographics, you know, you can't succeed. We don't accept that. We want to get you there. So that I think that's one, that's the big reasons why we've just been so successful in both our, you know, academic achievement and our academic growth.
Well, I have two kids that are coming up through the Williamson County Schools, this public school system. And you know, we're very happy so far, you know, at the end of the day, it really comes down to teachers. And people and caring. And we find that for sure in the schools that we've dealt with so far. And you know, obviously that permeates throughout the county and throughout the system. So I, you know, I personally do really appreciate that. And you know, I would hate to see anything that, that happens be a detriment to that. And so, you know, I, I hope that this doesn't. Impact things that are going on here. And it just as a final thing, you know, it seems to be like this orthodoxy in some circles that quote unquote, public schools are failing, even though. A lot of times when you drill down into, well, how do you like your public school? People like it. How do you like your teacher? You like it? Where does that idea that public schools in general are failing come from? And you know, is there any truth to that? Other than, you know, maybe in, in certain spots, obviously we need to do better, but are public schools failing? spots, obviously we need to do better, but are public schools failing? Is that sentence true?
Well, you know, whenever you hear someone say that, I, I always sort of channel them and they go, what do you mean by that? You know, what are you basing that upon? What are you comparing that to? Where are they, you know, succeeding? Let's look at, you know, kind of compare the, the different, uh, groups from that, you know, side by side, you know? Are they taking the same tests? So, you know, it, it's, it's a lot of these sort of commonly accepted, um, statements and beliefs that you start digging into it are, you know, they're fanciful. Um, I think if you.
Do you think it comes from, sorry to interrupt you, but do you think it comes from like a, uh, you know, I mean, cause part of this obviously is financial, no question, but also there's an ideological push here where people feel like public schools are teaching kids, you know, uh, this is me talking, not you, but like, you know, like leftist indoctrination or grooming, you know, the LGBT stuff, like, you know, people think that there's an indoctrination going on in public schools. Do you feel like part of this voucher push is coming from people who want to dismantle that and are misguided about it? Cause a lot of times their kids aren't even in these.
Well, I think there's some, some truth to that and there's some fairness. I think what happens is you take the worst of the worst stories, uh, that happen, you know, isolated incidences and you try to extrapolate that and apply to everywhere else. You know, look, I, I can't justify everything that, that might go on in a school district in Berkeley, California. I don't want to, you know, but Franklin, Tennessee is not Berkeley, California. And so that's one of the challenges that we have, quite honestly, is, is we have a lot of influx of individuals from the out of state and they're bringing those, you know, preconceptions and those biases from what they might've heard or, or in some cases even experienced there. And now trying to apply them to, you know, Franklin or Brentwood or Spring Hill or, or wherever else, or, or Tennessee in general, or some of the other things. And I just go, look, you know, you're in Tennessee. We don't indoctrinate with that. We, you know, we have state standards that are set by a statewide Board of Education that the governor appoints. And so we take those standards, they approve the curriculum. We take the curriculums they approve and frankly, we use it as a floor, not a ceiling, but we, you know, keep it within those guardrails and that's what we're teaching. And, you know, again, I hate to keep beating a dead horse, but you know, the, the coupons that the governor want to give, wants to give out for, you know, private schools, they don't have that. They don't have the same guidelines and the same checks and balances and the same transparency and openness to allow you to look into curriculum and books and, and everything else that we do.
That makes a lot of sense. Well, Eric, thanks for speaking up. Uh, I'll be definitely paying attention to the school board meetings coming up for people who are watching.
Let me, let me end with this too. I'm sorry. I know you got to wrap it there, but I want to make one other point with this as, as well, at least from kind of on, on the local level, um, you know, and you as a Williamson County resident, I know not all of your viewers are here, but you know, one of the things that, that we know and, and one thing that we're very blessed about is, you know, the, our own values, the, the desirability of this community that people are, you know, have been moving here in large numbers. And overwhelmingly, when you look why people are, are moving here, it's for the school system. If you go to any, you know, Williamson, Inc., Chamber of Commerce, that you can listen to those individuals talk about, you know, what is the, the competitive advantage that we have in this county that helps keep our property values up, that helps, you know, keep businesses coming in, that makes places like, you know, Mars, uh, want to relocate here. And it's the quality of the public school system. If this voucher scheme that the governor is pushing passes, and what's sad is the governor was educated here in Williamson County Schools. I, I don't know why he, he has this, uh, anger against public schools since he got a wonderful education himself at Franklin High School, which allowed him to go and get his engineering degree at, at Auburn, so a great base. But whatever it is, that quality of our school system here at Williamson County really sets us apart. And so if the governor is successful, if Senator Johnson is successful in passing the scheme and tearing down our school system, it's going to hurt the property values of a lot of residents here in Williamson County. And so I, you know, if there's the right and wrong issue of it, which we've talked a lot about, taking care of kids and, you know, not giving away more money for schools that, uh, don't accept everyone, that don't have the same standards that you do for the school system. But there's also the self-interest story of this, of this is really going to economically hurt our community if they vote for this. And so that's something that, you know, everyone who is employed here, has a small business here, has a, a home here, really needs to sort of think about and consider as well.
That's really well said. Let's leave it there. Eric Welch, Williamson County School Board, appreciate you coming on here. Follow him @EricWelchWCS on Twitter and wherever else you can find him. Eric, thanks for coming on, man.
Thanks, Justin. Appreciate you.
Take care.
Have fun.
All right. So that's Eric, again, @EricWelchWCS on Twitter. Makes some really valid points, uh, appealing to the self-interest of Williamson County property owners, which I think is important to do. And so I'm glad that he did that at the end. And, you know, and then there's all the other points that were made, not only by Eric, but also by Josh earlier today, uh, just that this is a program that is not going to just help the low-income students that are in quote unquote failing schools, which as Eric said, force them to define that when they say it, because they say it so freely without anything backing it up. And oftentimes it's the people that don't have kids in these schools that say that. That's what I've found. And, you know, meanwhile, this program is a universal program without any sort of limits on who it goes to, where it goes. And that is a lot of money out the door. I think the lookout, Sam Stoker, put it at like something like $7 billion at the top end that could be out the door. Obviously we're not saying that every kid in public schools is going to be in a private school tomorrow, but you can see what the long-term plan is. And that long-term plan will play out over a long period of time, at which point Governor Lee will be long gone. So this is sort of the, for lack of a better term, like the, the stink bomb that he's lighting off, that will then continue to impact communities like Williamson County, school boards like Williamson Counties, Collierville, Greenville for many years to come, because once the toothpaste is out of the tube, it's very hard to put it back in, as Josh told us earlier. So once this happens, it's hard to reverse it. And that's money out the door. That's programs cut. That's teachers fired. That's sports teams cut. That's what's happening in other states. I'm not just inventing that. I mean, entire schools are closing in Arizona and they blame these vouchers and charters. As I played you a clip from earlier today, this was last week in Arizona. And this is tearful parents saying their school is potentially going to close. You've seen in Iowa, they say vouchers don't offset tuition increases because what ends up happening is prices just go up. So it's not like all of this money is going to low-income kids and changing their lives. Money is going into the pockets of greedy special interests. And that is who was at Governor Lee's announcement. I was there. That's who was in that room, lobbyists, people with their hands out. And a lot of the people that, I think it's something like three or four legislators that voted to push vouchers through the first time now have six-figure jobs in Governor Lee's administration. And I'm hearing rumors that the leaders of this push, they themselves have jobs waiting for them afterward.[1787.92]